Less than a minute away. I'm sorry? Yes, okay, thank you. All right, if you would, the city clerk will call your name and we'll verify our role that way, and then we'll call a meeting to order and begin the process.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Here.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a full, um, full compliment. All seven are with us, and we appreciate that. So we will first call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting of Tuesday, June the 2nd. Um, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll follow that by an invocation from Alderman Sistrunk and a motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Lucas County, under God, indivisible, infinite, just and all.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yes, ma'am. Oh God, our Father, you have bound us together in a common life. Help us in the midst of our struggles for justice and truth, to confront one another without hatred or bitterness, and to work together with mutual forbearance and respect through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
All right, thank you, everyone. And just for those of you who haven't been to one of our meetings, which we are, uh, we are doing telephonically, we will be doing a roll call vote on every vote. And we'll be, I'll be going down to, down the line for each alderman. So since we aren't seeing one another, we'll be having the opportunity for each alderman to speak to any particular issue that is before us. And so as it stands right now, we need the approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do I have any changes to the agenda or the consented items? Alderman Carver?
No.
All right. Alderman Sistrunk?
Nothing from me.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Perkins, I'm sorry, Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Where the phone was instead of where you are. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
All right, so we have, uh, I need a motion now for the official agenda with the consented items.
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Uh, any further discussion? And in hearing none, we will say, uh, if you would, answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman?
Yea.
All right, and it is unanimous. Our agenda has been adopted with the consented items. I will now read those consented items. Um, first is consideration of the minutes of the May 5th, 2020 meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Second, consideration of the minutes of the May 15th, 2020 work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration of extending the proclamation of a local emergency due to the COVID-19 virus for an additional 30 days. B is consideration of rescinding the sixth and all previous resolutions of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville for the control of contagious and infectious diseases, and for the protection of public health and welfare, and for related purposes. Under board's business, item A is consideration of an agreement with global payments integrated open edge for credit card processing by the city of Starkville. Under engineering, we have request approval of the 2020 street improvement listing and authorize the city engineer to advertise for bids. Uh, under parks, we have consideration of approval of change order number one as a deductible to the original contract in the amount of $13,922.19 reflecting cost savings in grading, drainage, and permitting requirements. And last but not least, under utilities, we have request authorization for Starkville Utilities to offer the TDA back-to-business credit program to eligible business customers who have experienced operational and economic impact due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, ma'am.
My pleasure. That concludes both consent agenda items. The next item for us to, to, um, or the next item, agenda item, is announcements and comments. And I'm going to make a couple of, uh, announcements, and then I'm going to make some comments. Um, and in particular, I want to remind everyone to fill out the census form. Please go online if you haven't done so already. The census is incredibly important for our ability to obtain funding for various projects, for our ability to, um, be heard in ways that only the population, uh, as it is reported, allows us to do. So please, if you haven't done so, it's very simple. You go online, it's a five-minute process at the most, and, uh, is, is incredibly simple and incredibly important at the same time. So I encourage everyone to do that. And also, I wanted to let everyone know that, um, we're going to put this out on social media as well, but, uh, on Monday, Jim 8, we're going to open the Travis Outlaw Center, gym area only for walkers. Again, we have not been opening our, all of our park facilities because we are in a position to have cut costs, and those costs are, uh, associated with personnel. So we have enough personnel to open from 8 to 12, Monday through Friday, and so we will make that available, um, for the time being for those who wish to come in. We won't be opening the upper track area, but we'll be opening the gym area for walkers. So if you are, uh, desiring to do that, it will be 8 to 12, um, Monday through Friday, starting next Monday. Um, and now, um, more serious, more serious matters, and I'm inclined to take my mask off to do that, but I'm not going to do it. I'm going to hope that I'm conveying what I need to convey to everyone who is listening, everyone who's in the audience. Um, one of the things that has happened since we last met, since this board last met, is we have had the turmoil and the tragedy around the country with the death of Mr. George Floyd. And, uh, the treatment of the African-American population continues to be as cruel and unjustly. And just one week and one day ago, it was where we witnessed the egregious treatments and actions that, um, while they may not have been direct mallets, were certainly even worse in the sense that they were total indifference to the suffering of someone else. And so that someone being an African-American, uh, member of that community. Um, and the reason I'm going to speak to this is because I know that we have, um, had issues in the community recently come up, and I feel sure that a lot of folks here are wanting to speak to that tonight. But on Sunday, and then again on Monday, I attended some planning meetings for, um, the rally or the march, depending on, uh, what it is that, that ends up being asked for and, and being dealt with this evening. And out of that came the concerns that are things that we as a city have been asked to look at and to do something about. And what I think is important to note in this, and the things that I, that I took from it that were on a slide that was, um, shown on the screen there by Representative Taylor, was that, um, it is being asked of us as a board member and as elected leaders to denounce institutional and systemic racism and police brutality. And let me be very, very clear that I am doing that here and now in no uncertain terms. It is not something that in, in any, anyone's life should be encountered. And systemic racism and police brutality are things that should not be a part of anyone's existence, certainly not in our country, and certainly not in this city. So I doubt, I denounce that now. I feel sure that every one of our board members up here would, would agree with me in doing that. It is not a question, it is an absolute. Um, so first and foremost, I'm speaking to that. Um, the other thing that was asked of us was that we have city employee cultural sensitivity training, and I want to tell you now that that, that is in process. Our HR director has reached out to Mississippi State, and we are in the plans, or we are planning to make that happen, hopefully in, uh, the near future, and by that I mean within the next couple of weeks. I don't know what the, what the, uh, timing on that is, but we are reaching out to Mississippi State to join us and help us plan for that and provide that to each and every one of our city employees. Um, and de-escalation training in, uh, for our police department, that is something that is ongoing, and we do that as a part of our accreditation. Um, we are an accredited department in the state of Mississippi, and we are one of the few accredited departments in the state of Mississippi. And that is something of which, um, we should all be very proud and, and very comforted by because de-escalation training is a part of what they are required to go through in order to get accredited. Uh, that, and we also have a constitutional rights training that goes with that. So that, again, offers, uh, some understanding that we know what the rights are for peaceful protest, and that they are allowed to be in places that, uh, offer that as a constitutional right. So I speak to that. Um, the other element is the citizens review board. I've spoken with Chief today about how we go about seeing where, where we might look to for guidance on how that would best be done. It needs to be tailored to Starkville, and so it's going to take us some time to take a look and see what, what measures are appropriate for us. But those are the things that were asked of the city leaders at that meeting on both Sunday and again on Monday, and were a part of what they wanted us to do. And so I, I am sharing with you now that I think we have, uh, steps, we have already taken steps in that direction, and I certainly think that we will continue to do so. So I share that with you for that reason. I also have, uh, put out an op-ed piece for tomorrow morning in the Starkville, um, Daily News that, I'm assuming he's wordsmith for me to the extent that I'm not using bad grammar, but that is also to, uh, very clearly and unequivocally denounce any, any level of freak for police brutality that we have to do. It's needed police brutality and any racial, um, sense of insensitivity that we might be having. So injustice anywhere is for us something that we will not countenance, and we will work against it. So those are, those are the things I wanted to say to make sure that I had met some of the desires of the group that met on, again, on Sunday and Monday. So, um, Alderman Carver, any comments from you? Alderman Sistrunk?
I have, uh, want to join you in your denouncement of the systemic racism and police brutality that, that we have seen. Um, I, you said it very well. It, it is an absolute denouncement, and I, I agree that we all support that. De-escalation training is something that we've talked about off and on. Um, it is part of our ongoing services, but I, I would encourage and have encouraged us to, to do even more than the minimum that, that we have to do, and to make that, uh, a key component of our police training. Um, I, I also want to say that, um, we, we are supportive of our local community. Um, we will do what we can to, to assist in the, the things that they are trying to, um, to, to make happen this coming weekend, and also that that is just a start. Um, the real work comes after that. The real work comes after that, and I think, uh, we will all be willing to join in doing that work.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments, and I, I agree with everything you had to say, and, uh, I also agree with Alderman Sistrunk in that we will do whatever we need to do to facilitate, uh, the, whatever event they have planned for this, this Saturday. Um, I'll be fully supportive of whatever they need to want to do on that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Walker?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I will try to be brief. Uh, so over the last week, I've searched to try to find the right words that would express, uh, how I feel about this issue, and, um, unfortunately, I, I don't, I don't think I have the, the words that really convey the sense of emotions that I felt over the last week, um, other than to say just completely angered and frustrated and disgusted by the horrific events, uh, that we witnessed, um, in real time, uh, that happened to Mr. Floyd, and my condolences to he and his family. Um, since then, other things have transpired, and as I've thought about that and listening to Representative, uh, Taylor and others speak on Sunday night at the Stand Up, Starkville Stand Up, uh, gathering, I agree with what the mayor said, completely, uh, denounce systemic racism, uh, anywhere, and it's just not who we want to be. And so where I'm left with is both a, a level of deep sadness and just really disappointed in the, in the human condition of where we are. Uh, in the year 2020, while there's no doubt, we have made really great progress, um, in terms of race relations, but as many people more eloquently than I have stated is that it's not a race that ever has a, a true ending. You just have to keep taking one step at a time and try to make improvement. And I'm hopeful that the, the steps that the city of Starkville, um, will be able to take from both the legislative perspective and the hiring and training of police officers and other employees of the city of Starkville. We will do whatever we can to make sure that we treat all citizens, uh, with respect and dignity, um, and to truly, uh, honor what their oath is to, to protect and, and serve. Um, so just a, a huge, hugely sad and disappointed for the, for, for everyone involved. Um, they say it only takes a few bad apples to spoil the bunch. I certainly believe that Chief Ballard on our police staff has quality young men and women that want to uphold, uh, the best ideals of what it means to be a police officer. And I know those same attributes are found throughout, uh, police units throughout, throughout the nation. Unfortunately, uh, it are, it is those, uh, bad apples that routinely that we see, um, that get hired and commit these egregious acts. And at some point, enough is enough, and I'm hopeful that out of all this turmoil and sadness and anger and frustration, that there will be something good that comes out of it. And I hope that good is improved and increased legislation, improved, uh, looking at hiring practices to make sure that, to the best you can, spot those bad apples during the hiring process. Um, and so everybody has to be on point for looking at how you spot that. So again, my, my deepest sympathies for everyone involved, and, and I would, I would be remiss if I didn't also say, um, I have a, a very good friend that I grew up with, um, who's a police officer in the Dallas metro area. And conversation with him, uh, immediately after this happened was very similar to what Chief Ballard said on Sunday night, uh, was once that episode happened, and we saw that, that a lot of very good officers, both men and women, that wear the badge, um, are going to pay the ultimate price for the heinous actions of a select few individuals. That, when I say select few, it happens far too often, um, but it only takes a few individuals in any one police department to, to bring that about. So I'm, I'm in prayer for all the folks involved, the police community, everyone that's involved in this, and I'm with Alderman Little and Sistrunk and everybody else, is that, uh, the city of Starkville, myself over the next year on this board, if there's things that are brought to us and things that we can enact in terms of policy and legislation, to try to the best that we can, ensure that this type of, uh, egregious act does not happen in the city of Starkville, then we're here to be able to support that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, our, our country is hurting right now, uh, over the death of Mr. Floyd, Minneapolis, and the treatment, general treatment of African-Americans in our country. Um, it's been 50-plus years since I've seen anything like this, that was back to the death of, assassination of Dr. King. Um, our city needs to, to be sensitive in every way and do everything possible to facilitate peaceful marches, a peaceful march and assembly. We really need to come together, um, at the time where our country needs to come back together, and we all need to be, to work together as Americans, uh, as one. And so, uh, I'll, I'll support all efforts to that end, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Uh, yes, ma'am, ma'am. And ma'am, I may want to, um, say something after the citizen comments, depending on what is said, but at this time, ma'am, I would like to say thank you for your leadership on this matter. I, uh, certainly appreciate all of the things that you said, and, uh, finally, at this time, ma'am, I fully concur, uh, with all of your, your comments on this matter, and you have my full support. So the vice mayor stands 100% with you with regard to your comments. So I'm, you're the floor at this time, and I may desire recognition after the comments, depending upon what is said. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much for your support. I'll see you in the meeting on Saturday. I do make a hundred million, but thank you for your support, and Alderman Sistrunk, Alderman Sistrunk, thank you. She, God, thank you for being out front, working, finding out where the panel is. And I think everything is going down decent and order. I don't think it will be out of line because I hope we are out of this deal struggle here. That's not a question of fact. So I think everything is going well according to plan, you know, and I'm not on the board, but I'm, I'm still willing to support this because the times will change. We got the Corona, we got the Corona plague in one place, we got racism in another place. But we got two walls that we fighting. So what wall will we win? What wall is going to come out the winner? It, it's something that we never seen before in our life. The church is shit, shit all the way down in Israel. I'm quite fearful of it. I've never seen that happen before. I've never seen anything go on like this seven days ago, but if you ain't got, you don't have children, you don't know what it feel like to do the job. I know how they, I know how they feel because I have a long job. Just to see this on national TV, it's what got the world in the shape and the news. The people's feeling what they're feeling, but you know when you hear a word, you know, and people are just tired. I imagine African-Americans, all races of people, all nations of people, of times and races, a war that you've been fighting so many, so many years, and trying to figure out why we fighting? Why we fighting? We all made it in this and life is gone. You cut me, you bleed red blood. You cut you, you bleed red blood. Why we fighting? Why we so angry? Why the plan feel not level? That's what I'm out of this about. The plan feel not level. Give me the same opportunity that my brother, my white brother and my white sister have. Give me the same opportunity. That's what this all about. Make the plan feel level. Treat us like we somebody because we are somebody, because we all made it in this and the life of God. We all made it to the big goal in our age. We're somebody, and that's all this is all about. Treat us like we people.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right, next, uh, on our agenda, we move to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for each citizen who wishes to speak to us. You have three minutes. You'll, you'll be timed by Miss Harden, who is sitting right down there, and, uh, you may discuss anything you wish to. We normally do not respond at the time to, uh, to those comments. There may be an occasional exception, but, uh, it is not our practice to respond. It is your opportunity to speak to us. So, Mr. Turner?
Good evening to the Red Bull.
Good evening.
I'm a man driving down, we're seven, uh, to the mayor, to forty feet, to five feet, and, uh, I'm with him on the NAPD. Uh, one thing that we have to do, and we need to do here, uh, to say that we have a commander and chief that won't be a dictator. Let, 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 let her. Uh, uh, it's wrong to try to teach it, uh, even, uh, get a kick out of, of, of starting from this and be a, get a kick out of it. That we not a dictator, but being, uh, sad and you know that the commanding chief hadn't had, uh, uh, had dictators on American soil, uh, what have now become, uh, the NAPD, he didn't invite us here. Uh, and, but, uh, uh, he got to have a picture saying, uh, he got to mean what he's saying to say what he need. And, uh, he telling him, he didn't read, uh, thinking that it's fine to, uh, to, to, to be hateful, you know, and we, we didn't have near thirty-six, and we know for it right, but, uh, we don't want kids to repeat itself. Also, um, uh, we would like to know how, uh, how long would be, uh, one day of, uh, God will be, uh, doing, uh, getting hard now, and it's going to be kind of hard trying to, uh, endure that for one day, pick up, and, uh, uh, to think that we could help, and then, uh, you, 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 try to turn yourself around. Uh, uh, they keep us, uh, in our meeting that, uh, it's a thing that be called sundown. If you see a sundown sign, then, uh, don't stop. Uh, drag and grand drag, that is they call it shit. Let, let, let it be careful. And also, uh, I'm like, uh, in place of my niece and my nephew and my sister and my brother, uh, God called, uh, at four twenty, Monday, Monday morning, I was like, they told me that my mom passed. And, uh, I was just praying for them because, uh, my niece and nephew, uh, they have a grandmother and, uh, my sister and my brother, and, uh, I'm giving that going to them, that , uh, I got all the ways, and, uh, that's your, you get the pray for the family, um...
Mr. Turner, that's your three min, you never go over three minutes, so that's your three minutes, and, and I, I'm very sorry about your loss of your moment. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mayor Schrull, Alderman Chief, uh, Ballard, Chief Yarborough. Uh, first, let me say thank you, Mayor Schrull and Alderman, for listening. Uh, I've been working hard, a lot of spiritual, mental, uh, emotional strain.
No, could I get you to, I, I know who you are, but I'm, I should have said, if you would identify yourself, please. Put a camera in for people watching.
Reverend Joseph Stone, pastor, Second Baptist Church. Uh, we've been working very diligently the past, uh, few days to address those issues that you did, uh, so eloquently, and I'm here to ask that if the city of Starkville could work, uh, with us, uh, we want to demonstrate, we do it the right way. We put a lot of planning into it. Uh, we have talked to Chief Ballard, and what we're asking for, if we could, um, start a walk from Unity Park, uh, go down, of course, into Main Street, and walk to J. O. King Park, and in there with a short, concise rally, uh, we would greatly appreciate it. I know when the Eric Garner situation happened, uh, a few years ago, um, some students from Mississippi State University, uh, reached out to me, I reached out at that time, Chief Nichols, and we had a great partnership. Uh, Chief Nichols, along with Mississippi State University policemen, uh, they allowed us to start at State, uh, come down, of course, into 12. Uh, it was a beautiful sight of unity, and I'm hoping that, that can happen again. Uh, we, uh, kind of got together and calling it, um, Starkville Stand Up. Also, Ms. Dela Douglas from Mississippi State University, uh, we were able to pull in that group, uh, from the university to work together. And again, I'm asking because, uh, not that we want violence or looting or robbing, but we need a chance to express and to say with one core and one voice, uh, that we denounce systemic racism and police brutality against black people in particular, and we will ask the board to support us in that. Uh, we would like to do it Saturday morning, uh, if we could, uh, still trying to work out some of the kinks, uh, but if we can work with the board and Chief Ballard, uh, to again, to begin at Unity Park, which is very symbolic, we know, uh, I'm pastor, Second Baptist Church, many of you know Dr. Douglas Garner was very big in the civil rights movement. They will be very symbolic to start there, again, go down, of course, into Main Street, and in at J. O. King Park, which is also symbolic for Laura and James Graham, uh, who also be players in the civil rights movement. So as pastor and leader in the community, again, we have worked hard to do it the right way, and I want to say thank you to all the Alderman, Mayor Schrull, who have been picking up chairs there. So, uh, we thank you, but again, as citizens of Starkville, we want to stand up against those two things, specifically, that systemic racism and, uh, police brutality. And again, we're pulling in Mississippi State University because they're part of Starkville, and we want to work together again, or, and the chief police could work with us on those things, where we could do that Saturday morning in a peaceful, uh, orderly way, it would greatly be appreciated by the group.
Of course, thank you, Pastor Stone.
All right, that's all we got. That's all here, ma'am. First of all, I have to make my respectful remarks, uh, to the person, especially, and I just follow in two things that Mayor made with Chief Turner, uh, the timeframe between having a special, you know, permanent, you know, capacity, and then the second would be that we may, um, during, during the long with coronavirus, as far as not having any such gathering for a, what have y'all been thinking as far as carrying on those two questions?
Well, that's going to, I can, I can respond in the sense that the board can do whatever the board wants to do. Um, obviously, we did not, um, change anything we did as it relates to no more special events because of the coronavirus and for the need for social distancing and masks, et cetera. Um, so the board would have to act on that. Um, and in this case, it would be, um, we would be not going by our normal, which is to have a special event committee, to have insurance, to have the board come authorize it. Our agenda has been adopted tonight, if we want to do a special... If we wanna do a special call meeting, it would be a special call meeting, but all of those things normally would have to come together to make that happen. Saturday is a fairly short-term frame, um, but it's certainly easy enough to call a special call meeting, but we would need the board as a, as a majority to determine that that's what they wanna do.
If I could speak just, um, one thing that we're trying to do is, I know it's quick, but things are happening so fast across the country. Uh, again, we try to plan and prepare. The last thing, once other people coming in to Starkville, then freedom in there, if there's not some starting.
That's gonna be my second question. I haven't, I haven't talked on the phone yet, but yes. Uh, Starkville is very, very sound, and I wholeheartedly believe that anybody from this university town is an educated citizen. Um, I don't suspect any of the local crowd, what, what kind of protection they ask sometimes. Each time we have big crowd situations like Bulldog Bash, you know, what kind of, uh, kind of proceedings planned in place for outsiders to make some of the traffic ready?
One thing that, uh, one committee, working committee that we formed is, uh, Safety Health Committee. Again, they're there just to alert Chief Ballard and any other officer. They will be having special T-shirts. They will have their eyes and ears open, uh, looking for anybody that's coming in to advocate, anybody that's coming in and so see the potential. But we taking that into consideration. Uh, Reverend Chet Taylor has done an awesome job on some training and giving us some do's and don'ts about, uh, protesting or demonstrating. So again, we, we're trying to be very proactive. And again, we, we just trying to hopefully the board will work with us on that.
Would you route based coming out of university, I mean, uh, Unity Park, from Main Street or going eighty-two?
Uh, we can work with Chief, but we do wanna walk a portion of Main Street, again, not the entire Main Street, but again, uh, again, we got energy and we got wisdom working together. And so we wanna be able to try to appease that in the best way, uh, in the safest way possible. So again, uh, we're more than welcome to work with Chief on what would be the best route for us to leave Unity Park, uh, to get to a portion of Main Street, ultimately end up in J L King Park for a rally.
I think if you can accommodate, you can accommodate, and just same thing, the same time you get in to, uh, interstate highway situations. Right, you got to keep, maybe there's problems sometimes, just stayed on it for elongated stretch, so.
And again, I think when we did the Eric Garner march, uh, in, we did a great job, that's what, we moved right along, anticipated, and we went off there there with.
Okay. Hold on, cover anything further? All right, as long as you're here, there may be some other questions of board members, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go down the line, just like I did a few seconds ago. Uh, Alderman Sisdrunk, any questions of, uh, Pastor Car- uh, Pastor Stone, excuse me? Alderman Sisdrunk? Okay, I'm gonna take that for a no. Alderman Little, any questions of, uh, Pastor Stone?
May.
Oh, go ahead.
Alderman Sisdrunk, I hear you again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I muted my mic and I'm slow technologically. Um, I, I, I would very much like, to the extent possible, follow the processes that we need to do and expedite them to accommodate this march. Um, so I would encourage us to have, um, Reverend Stone and whomever else needs to sit down with the city, work through that special event form, and, and have a special call meeting to make the necessary approvals. Um, if, if there's a better way to do it, I'm certainly open to that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little, any, any questions or, or questions, or comments to Pastor Stone?
I, I agree with Alderman Sisdrunk, and as I said earlier, I wanna do whatever we need to do to facilitate the process, expedite it. Uh, if that includes a special call anytime this week, uh, I'd make myself available. Um, I think safety is paramount, and the route needs to be established, that there's a safe route, and, and the numbers need to be reviewed with the chief. And, you know, just all those things that we typically do to ensure everyone's safety, because, you know, if someone were to get hurt, or, or a car out of control, and, you know, or something coming down through there, if everything's not adequately done and prepared for, we could have a tragic accident. We don't wanna have anything like that, so. But I think we can expedite this and get this all done in time for Saturday. So, I would say let's, let's get on that and, and get the forms filled out and, and proper people in, in the process meeting early in the morning and try to get the ball rolling.
All right, thank you, Alderman Little. Alderman Walker, any, any questions or comments regarding, uh, this item on, uh, that Pastor Stone was talking about?
No, ma'am, other than I would say that I agree with, uh, what the other Aldermen have said, is that I, I'm for, um, being able to expedite and have this, but I do agree with Alderman, uh, Little, that note defining what that route is, um, for safety and for other people that are coming, uh, to this event, to know where, where that's going to be. So I would say I'm, I'm for us having a process. And if we feel that that process can't happen in a timely enough fashion, I'm totally on board with an event happening at the Unity, uh, Park, or either J L King, or any other park, uh, in, in the community. But I do think it's important for people's safety, um, and to make sure that, that the process is there for a reason, and the reason for that process is, um, to handle expectations of crowd size, so it can be safe, it can be sanitary, um, and to allow people to, to, to protest, um, in, in a safe en- environment. So I, I think at a minimum, having those forms, understanding what the insurance and, for me, uh, really knowing what a defined route, uh, for where that, uh, is, is going to take places. I think it sounds like they know the, the destination, the start and the destination, uh, but how to safely get there, whether it's going down West Main and coming across Long, so you don't have another street, or if you go straight down, uh, D L Connor, uh, to hit one eighty-two and, and cut across. I, I don't know, but I think, I think in consultation with Police Chief and the Working Committee that Pastor Stone's group, uh, has established, um, I, I'm willing to, to meet anytime this week to make that determination, once we have, uh, the, the ducks in order, um, and to make sure that, that we are following that process, knowing that we are circumventing that process from a time standpoint, to try to do what we can, um, to ensure that this event happens. That, Mayor, I yield.
All right, thank you. Alderman Betty?
Mayor, could, could we not approve this, uh, this event by board resolution tonight? As show of support for, from Pastor Stone, for the efforts he's made and, and working, and just, uh, meeting with committee, city leaders and with Mayor Stone, uh, with Pastor Stone, his group, in the morning, try to start to work out the details. Couldn't that be done tonight, in our meeting tonight?
Uh, the board can do whatever the board wants to do, but I think the process, we can still work through the process without, um...
These are extenuating circumstances, I mean, and, and, you know, extraordinary times, and, and that would be something that we could do as a board to show good faith and, and support to move this thing along. Um, I would also recommend Pastor Stone, although you thought about this or not, but as far as the route concerned, you, you're working Mississippi State, right?
Yeah.
Why not, why not downtown, down Main Street to the campus, used to, uh, amphitheater on campus, it would be a final place to, to hold your assembly?
Uh, well, one thing is, um, I've tried to make decisions for a whole group. Uh, my goal, again, to facilitate. Uh, I can use more than what I'm tech-
Was that, was that ever, was that ever broke, that idea of you?
No, we had not.
Would Mississippi State entertain that?
We wouldn't entertain it.
But it's a big outdoor venue made for several thousand people, and it has a stage, and I mean, it has, it gets, it's set up for something where you could have an event of this type. It would be symbolic to have that on Mississippi State University campus, I think. I think it, it would certainly send a, a message, positive message about what, how we feel about this state of Mississippi and city of Starkville. And a, a, a peaceful march down our main street that's the connector between downtown and university would, would, would certainly do that on, on the campus to that, to that, uh, amphitheater, right? Just on, and it's on the west edge of campus when you get on campus, you're right there.
Uh, definitely, Alderman Betty, I will take that back to the group, try to get a consensus. So again, um...
I mean, I don't know, maybe that won't fly, but I just thought it might would be a-
Uh, I don't mind taking that back, again, I'm, I'm facilitating, and so I, I'll try not to make decisions for the whole group, because we've got a very diverse group. And again, like you have been there, and you've seen, uh, young, old, black, white, there. And so again, I'm facilitating, but definitely, uh, awesome idea, uh, but I wouldn't dare try to make a decision on my own, but I would definitely take that back. And also, again, talking, working with Chief Ballard as well, and-
And I guess the university certainly wants to be, will be involved in, in Mississippi State. That's the final destination for the, for the event, and we, they would have to, okay, sign off on that. But, uh, so, Mayor, I'll, I'll yield, I just didn't know whether we might wanna go ahead and, and move forward with that, since we're, we're going to, um, I won't say circumvent, but we're going to streamline the process by which we do this. Uh, if we could just, uh, council, I guess we, we both y'all, we can do this, right?
We could do that tonight, Alderman Betty. I think what you'll need to consider is, we want to have ultimate sign off on the event, because if the board made that motion tonight, it would have to be by final approval of Chief Ballard and Dr. Kim, when he looks at the special events permit, and Chief Yarber, and all the other department heads that signed that special events permit. As long as you're comfortable with leaving that discretion up to them, then the board can approve something tonight. If the board would like to retain that discretion and make the call on its own, then the special call would be the best route to take.
So you would recommend a special call to do that as soon as possible?
I think it could be Saturday morning at ten, or, or whenever y'all get the, the ducks in a row, like you want it for the event.
Um. Pastor Stone, is that simple?
Yeah, definitely. Again, I-
Anytime y'all could, you folks could talk in Mississippi State, I don't know, or maybe talk more about this, or something like that.
Well, I said, definitely, I will, uh, we have to represent the gear that have been working with the group, uh, again. I will go back, I will put it out there for them, uh, and try to let the group of people that don't mind working with Chief Ballard. Um, at this point, I, I think I found my due diligence and kind of pull us together. And again, I'm, I'm not dictating or facilitating, so we'll try to get a group to work with Chief Ballard on the best route, best place, uh, safest route, safest place, where we can get done, what we need to get done. And the main thing is just demonstrating and showing at the city that we stand again. Uh, we're standing up again to systemic racism and police violence.
You're planning, this would be planned for Saturday, if you put it all off. Counselor, when, when could we call it, uh, Mayor, when could we call it special?
Well, the only thing I would say is, is we need to know what that route is, and so if he's going to go back and research, uh, some more route opportunities, yours sounds like a very interesting one, but if you're gonna go back and do that, we need to have at least the route in front of us, so the chief can plan, because it does take a bit of planning. Depending on what you've got, you gotta know how many police officers you need, you gotta know about fire trucks and all that, so, um...
We have a meeting of, uh, working committee, chair people, on tomorrow at, um, five thirty at the church. And so maybe Chief Ballard can be at that meeting, and those, um, chair, chairs of those working committees and work with Chief Ballard, uh, and any other person from this working group that wants to be a part of that particular committee. Uh, I think we can come out of that meeting tomorrow evening with a route, uh, and can get it back to you.
Okay, with that being said, there's certainly the option for us to have one today, it's Tuesday, we could have a, have a meeting on Thursday, we could have a meeting on Friday, so there are a couple of days at which will be-
Mayor, I will work, like, to get any route, um, to you, um, Thursday morning, uh, well, Chief can have it, um, Wednesday evening, but we'll work and make it happen. So, um, you, Mayor, and Board of Aldermen, can look at that and decide whether to approve it.
Okay, I, I still need to get, Vice Mayor, do you have any questions or comments to, to Pastor Stone?
Uh, well, yes, ma'am, I thank you for the recognition, Mayor. I don't have anything I wanna say to Pastor Stone at this moment, but Attorney, you, can you hear me real good, Attorney Latimer?
Can, Vice Mayor.
Well, very good. Uh, Mayor, let me just, just pause a few minutes and make some comments here. You know, I've been at this a long time now, and the important thing about this request is that, is that, as everyone knows who's tuned in here, the mayor and the board and the city attorney and the public, that I always look at things from a legal perspective, and that is important. The important thing about this matter and all of the, other multitudinal requests that we get for special events, we have a process. The process has to be strictly adhered to. The process has to be strictly followed, because if we do not strictly follow the process, then we'll end up treating differently other people who have been similarly situated. Now, it is my understanding, Mayor, and board, and my distinguished colleagues, uh, that we do not have a pending application for a permit. Now, certainly, it is my opinion, Honorable Mayor, that we cannot waive that requirement. As you just said, Mayor, uh, there is, um, a, a very vast amount of valuable information. And as the attorney knows, that we have to have the required insurance, among other things, that we have requ- required all others who have come up before this board in its official capacity to peacefully, to peacefully assemble upon the roads, streets of the city of Starkville. Now, with, Mayor, with all great respect to the comments tonight, um, the Vice Mayor, for consistency purposes and for legal purposes, is not willing to yield any requirements for the process. Well, well, Vice Mayor, why are you not willing to give it up? The reason I'm so fervent and so persistent about this, because by making sure everybody follows the process, then no one can come up to us after tonight and tell us, well, you did it for this group. We want the same thing, and, and as long as we continue to meet, we will hear that the minute we make an exception. Now, now, you know, and this process is very valuable and very vital, because there's a lot of information that we need to get, and we don't need to be hurried in doing this. So the first step is, it got to be an application. That needs to go through the process. And with all due respect to our department heads, I do not want to personally yield any decision-making. Not that they won't make a good decision, but we always normally go through the process. So, uh, Mayor, it is my recommendation, respectfully, with all that being said, that every special event that comes to the city of Starkville needs to go through the process, including the one that's before tonight. Matter of fact, the one that we're talking about now is not even on the agenda. And so it's really not officially before us. I understand the board can do what it can do or desires to do, but what happens is, you know, it may not give the, may not receive the consideration that it is due. And, and, and the reason I'm talking so lengthy about this, Mayor, and all due respect to the requesting party here, is because we need to make sure that we follow the process. You know, we, we have a chief of police who, who, uh, who needs to, honorable chief of police who needs to look at this. He needs to see the route on paper. He don't need to be rushed here tonight, well, we're gonna go this street, that street, and that street. He needs to study that. Planning goes into that. Thoughtfulness goes through it. All our other department heads, the fire chief needs to look at it. The, uh, the utility director needs to look into it. We got to involve the sanitation environmental, and all other department heads, including the parks, that that's where they're gonna go, because we have rules to be followed at the parks. So we always articulate that, and I don't even wanna be rushed into a decision-making with any mayor that's not on the agenda. So I think we just need to, to let this go through the process, so when, so when July comes, or thereafter, before, when someone says, well, y'all did this for this group that say that they wanna hurry, they need to do it Saturday, y'all made an exception, and we want the same exception. And Attorney, I think that would present a legal problem. Is that correct, Attorney?
I agree with you, Senator.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor, for all of these reasons, it is my very, very respectful request that we follow the process. And I think what needs to happen, if there's anyone else to speak about this matter after this, um, floor was yielded from the three, I think each person has three minutes to speak. So once the floor is yielded, and after the meeting, they can get with you, and, and if they not aware of the process, they can be given the process by the mayor of the city of Starkville. Then Mayor, I'm saying very respectfully, and then if you are of the opinion that we need to have a special call meeting, or any two Aldermen feel that, per state law, then we can meet. And so, you know, I, the safest thing to do this is go through the process. I've been at this for almost twenty-seven years. Next month, the first meeting, twenty-seven years on this board. I know what'll happen if we don't follow the process. So Mayor, I'm just very respectfully asking that they, if they wanna pursue this for Saturday, they can meet with you, if you're available after the meeting tonight. They can get the process from you, and that you can explain it to them. Uh, before we come back to the board, if you call a special meeting, I want your attorney to make sure that that application, just like all others, uh, area eyes dotted, area tears crossed. I'm not against anybody, but I just wanna make sure they follow the process. And, and this is a consistent message. I'm not singling anybody out. I've given the same message over and over and over again. It's gonna be the same message the next time the next person come here and ask you the same thing. So if we do it this way, then we'll be legally protected, and we're gonna be legally correct. And so Mayor, I'm, I'm about to yield, but let me just say this one last thing, is that, uh, that we just need to, it's when the general from seven, uh, finished talking, or when the mayor brings this to a close, it's my respectful recommendation that we take no action tonight, no motion tonight- action tonight, no motion tonight, other than the mayor can, if they desire, can give the mayor, uh, uh, they can follow the process that the mayor articulates to them. Then the mayor feels that we need to have a special call meeting, then she will notify us like she does in any other situation. So Mayor, uh, those are my thoughts on this. Now you have the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor. How long does it take to get an application out of the application, later we pay it back to you? How long does it take?
Uh, well, it depends on if they have the information available to them and that's the reason I was talking about the route is because if they don't know what the route is, then they don't have all the information at this point.
How long does it take to get an insurance application? For us, we need to prove. We need to have insurance, we need to have funding. So how long does it take? We got 380 to Woodwood, we got Williams, 30 surprise. We can call a special call meeting, we got all the information in there. We can call a special call meeting on Friday, like we always do. You know, it's all, it's all me. So what, what's now, before you want to get the application and the insurance and the ballot, we can't do nothing until we get the route approved, no way. We already said we're going to bring the route through. So what, what's the difference? How long would it take for us to process this?
Well, you can speak to insurance because I don't know what insurance.
Alderman Vaughn, it usually takes about 48 hours to bind insurance. So I would recommend to Pastor Stone's group to get on the insurance first thing tomorrow morning and to try to get that insurance in by Friday.
Secretary, uh, if we've been watching what's been going on around this nation, if we don't do it, it's still going to be done. Our group decided to be proactive and try to do things the right way. Many of you have attended those meetings and have seen the hard work that we have put in in these past few days to respectfully do it the right way. And I'm of this belief with the emotions, the anger, and the things that are going on in this world around this particular subject, I think it would be a bad decision to wait and allow someone to come in and create an narrative that's not Starville. These are extenuating circumstances. Uh, again, no one knows the, um, stress I have had to go through to facilitate giving us to this point for this first crime. And so again, I did say, Chief Ballard has been in on the front end. Many of you have attended those meetings. Uh, the hard work has been done and is being done. I believe the citizens of Starkville deserve to be able to have our board so eloquently, eloquently came out and denounced those things tonight, who so eloquently listened at those meetings. And I've started to work on some of the objectives. So again, I'm just a facilitator. My goal, uh, in this community as a pastor of a church that has always been at the forefront of social action, is to do my best to do it in a way that will be peaceful. And so again, it's a board decision. I accept that. I'll live with it and I'll do whatever I need to do to continue to try to be an example. But I employ you, watch the news, see what happens. People are not waiting. And I think that if we get out front and we do things the right way, Starkville can stand up and show other communities how it should be done.
Mayor, might be right on. Uh, hang on, hang on just a second. There were two, two questions. One of them was, you asked about insurance and the other one was the, when we could get it done? We need, yeah, we just need our department head.
If we put the route on Wednesday morning, if you have a Thursday surprise, an insurance day and Friday, so what, what we call a special evening prize, so what, what, what's that?
That, that's what it would be. It's, and it's easy enough to get the department heads together. Obviously, we, we will be together tomorrow morning at 10:00, but I don't believe the route will be ready at that point in time, so.
Uh, if we need to be here at 10:00, if that's possible.
Well, no, that, I mean, that's our department head meeting, which is after the, after the board meeting meeting, but, you know, if you could be here at 11:00, that's probably...
I can, I can have a group here by 11:00.
Okay, all right, well, then we will, you're welcome to come at that point in time. So that, is that answer your question, Alderman Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I heard someone, Alderman Walker, was that you?
Yes, ma'am, it was. Um, I, I certainly agree with what Vice Mayor Perkins had to say on this matter and, uh, Pastor Stone is making a point that it may happen anyway, um, and it very well could. Uh, but when I was there on Sunday night, the, one of the very first things I heard Representative Taylor speak on and the video that he showed, talked about how to do it the right way and being proactive. And one of the very first things mentioned in that video was to have a permit. Um, and that is the, the legal process to go through to try to ensure, um, that we can have a safe event. And I think the board is willing to do what we can to try to help get you there as fast as you can, um, but you got to know the route. You got to have insurance. There's some things that you have to have, otherwise it's just a gathering of people that isn't planned and I don't think will be, uh, what your group is trying to stand for. I would say, I believe, Mayor, if I, if I'm right, and the city attorney and others might be able to weigh in, if it doesn't, if we don't believe that that can happen by this Saturday, the alternative might be instead of closing the streets and marching on the streets, it's probably much more straightforward to be able to get that permit, to be able to host, uh, an event, a protest, a demonstration at a location that doesn't involve a march, whether that was going to be at J.L. King or somewhere else. Getting that permit is much more straightforward than having a, a route identified. So I would, I would pass it back to Pastor Stone, um, and his working group, uh, to, to meet with the mayor and the community development department to see what is a realistic o- opportunity for having people have a, a voice and a place to demonstrate, uh, by this Saturday, whether that be a march from one place to the other or being able to just host an event at a singular place. Uh, and there could always be a, a march later on if that, if that needed to happen. So I would, I would, um, encourage everybody to look at what all the options that you might have here, uh, to realize that it's very quick between now and Saturday and it doesn't sound like that we have a route. We don't know where insurance is. Um, there's a lot of things that while we're being proactive and have been working very hard, just aren't, just aren't ready and, and thought through at this point. And I take the Vice Mayor's wisdom on, on this and, uh, looking at it very seriously because he's right. The next group that may want to have that march may be something that is the antithesis of what this group is standing for and protesting on Saturday. And if we treat one group any different than the other, then there's no doubt that we have a, a legal problem that only begets, uh, more problems down the line. So I'm with the Vice Mayor. I think we absolutely need to follow the process. If there needs to be a special event and that's going to include a march where the streets have to be shut down, we got to know the route, they've got to have the insurance. It's got to be presented to us in a timely fashion so we can ensure that this event is both successful and safe for everybody that participates, including those Starkville citizens who don't participate, um, in this event. That, that's the reason there is a process and, um, I, I'm in complete agreement with the Vice Mayor. I'm also in agreement that if all those things are done and handled in a timely fashion, then I have no problem voting to approve this, uh, for this Saturday. But I think there's still a lot of i's and a lot of t's to be crossed in order to make sure that that happens.
All right, thank you, Alderman Walker. Well, thank you, Pastor Stone. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Siskron?
Yes, I, I wanted to say that I'm, I'm going to speak on faith here, that I think with, um, the good efforts of the group that are trying to get all of this organized, that they absolutely can get it pulled together in time to do what they want to do by Saturday. And, um, I, I believe that this board, as, as Alderman Walker just said, will, um, will, will be supportive of that if they can in fact to get everything pulled together. And, and I, I, I believe that they can.
Right, thank you, Alderman Siskron.
With due respect to all my colleagues, what if a special events liability policy prohibits expensive, in light of circumstances within the time we're in? I mean, one can be purchased and there's somebody out there loyal to somebody to write it. And maybe David Ruff can speak more to this because he's in insurance business, but, uh, I mean, it's, what, what if, if insurance cannot be secured because it is cost prohibitive for, for a group to pay for?
That would be a board decision.
I mean, that just, something needs to be brought up.
We, well, we, we make, the board, not me, the board makes those kinds of determinations regularly as to what, how much of a risk they wish to assume, how much they wish to take on, so. Okay, um, anyone else wishing to have, make citizen's comments? If you would, please, um, come up, state your name.
My name is Gina Lewis.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alderman and Chief. Um, I would like to first express that we are not coming out here to, we're not coming out here to write. We're not coming out here to disrupt. We are coming out here to disrupt the systemic oppression and dehumanization that we have experienced in this community and this world. If we are going to allow things like dead miners to prevent us from showing that we as a community can gather and change the floor, then that is exactly the systemic oppression that we are fighting for. This is a prime example. I ask you, on our end, we will do everything we possibly can to get all the information that you need, to get all the information to move this process forward. We are simply asking you to expedite the process. I understand we need a route, we need to, we need to identify insurance and we need to get a bunch of other things together. People work tirelessly to provide you with everything that you need, everything that you need to document that you guys did this the right way. I understand, I was in the military, I understand progress. Here's to facilitate that part. You started this meeting by saying that you would do everything you possibly can to facilitate a peaceful protest, a peaceful stand for our community. This is, is, this is one of those, this is one of those facilitations that we are going to have for, is to expedite the process. Thank you for your consideration and I do ask that you hear it though and understand.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Citizens comments? You have three? Okay.
Y'all know I was coming up here, didn't you? So my name is Rosa Doma. I'm a popcorn. And as, uh, I would acknowledge all y'all, and thank you for your time, um, here today and everybody who came out. So as I'm sitting here listening to, I just want to go ahead and, um, possibly answer a lot of questions. I'm sitting here listening to the assurance. I've spoken to two insurance agents and they both told me that insurance companies no longer want to insure them. And so, and also the other option that they gave me is if, the chances is if we get someone to insure this, this kind of costs thousands of dollars, not hundreds. This is not a business. It is not a group that, that has been formed, that has a budget. This is a group that has come together in the moment that we are today and the pain that we are today, in the, let me not even say today, just in general that we have been for years. And I want to make sure that we are very well aware of the reality of what is going on and the position that we are in as far as community leaders, as far as, um, being in these committees. It has been very vocal, and I want to make sure it's very clear, people plan to march on Saturday. Our job here is that we want a peaceful march. We want a march that signifies unity. We want a march that puts all the pieces together that Starkville is constantly preaching as far as inclusion, diversity. We want to march, I see something beautiful. I see business owners outside of their business handing out water. I see people understanding or trying to understand what we are, what we are talking about. But at the same time, from someone that is talking to both ends, I see us going back and telling the folks who are hurting. And y'all know folks who are hurting. They're hurting. And so all of these things that we're talking about in these policies and procedures and anything that we have spoken about right now, it is going to be very hard to communicate that to folks who are in pain. And if they feel like we are with them, by we, I mean the folks in this room, the community, black, white, Hispanic, yellow, it does not matter to me, that we are all together, this can be a very beautiful thing that voices that have been silent for far too long can feel like they are heard. And more importantly, depending on the way we go through this process, they feel like they are supported. Because as far as they are concerned, as far as we are concerned, let me correct myself, we will be heard. We just want to be heard in the most peaceful, in the most united way possible. And so I will go ahead and answer that question for y'all right now because I see that you will have plenty of things that you will have to discuss, but I do not think we will be able to secure insurance. So the question that is left on the table, what can we do from there? Do we still continue to utilize these folks of our community that are trying to put this together, that folks listen to? Or do we say because of this, we will not do this? And then we will either wake up Saturday morning to a business by ministry, that God knows what I may find, because that was not part of that process and we tried and it did not work. So think about that. This is not an every day situation. This is not the Christmas parade. We respect your policies, we respect the position. We respect that we have to go back and do some work, but at the same time, we ask that y'all respect the reality of what the community is. And I also, before I leave, just want to say one thing. I spoke to a law officer, a police officer yesterday. It was about two hours, we were, me and him and a couple of friends who were there till the lights come out. And he told us that places where you do not do it right away and you wait weeks, it brings people from outside in. We want the Starkville voice to be heard and we want it to be heard at the Starkville way. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Gray Harris, I'm from Moore, Florida. Today I actually came to first talk to, as a representative of Starkville Pride officially sponsors the effort that Jala and the Reverend have put forward. However, after hearing everything today, that sponsorship still stands, but from a personal point, everything that Jala and everybody has said is something that I can speak for from this aspect of students at Mississippi State University. I cannot speak for the university itself, but I'm a graduate assistant there. I've been here for the past 50 years and the students are going to march regardless. That is something that needs to be looked at because from the standpoint of students and from the standpoint of everybody who is currently being affected by what's happening, a procedure such as make going through another two week period to approve a form is going to do nothing more than prove to them that the system has pushed back against them in any way of peace that they have. Um, I don't normally do this, so I'm nervous, sorry, but I am for you to just listen to what's been said and to go forward with the idea of accelerating the process because accelerating the process is going to happen with or without you, approved or not, and it would be better for everybody if it was a collective effort and not an effort put forward by a few people and denied by a system that continues to push it against this sort of people. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, and the board. Uh, my name is Christine Williams, Ward, One Resident. Uh, I did not come here attending to speak tonight. Uh, I came here to observe because I, I was going to volunteer my time and see what I can do in my community. But, um, I do want to point out that, um, when, when residents say, you know, this is not the Christmas parade, it's not the Fourth of July, which that, that Fourth of July gathering is on the agenda, which hopefully you guys will actually get to sometime tonight. But, um, this is equally important, it's not more important than the no see gatherings that the city takes on every year. And I, I just want to put out there, and I'm not sure, is there a way that the, that the city could join in with the groups of individuals and make this a Starkville city sponsored? This is what Starkville stands for. Starkville is above and beyond a lot of cities in the state of Mississippi and this is a prime opportunity for us to prove that. Every time we take one or two good steps forward in this thing, we take three or four stupid steps back and this is the perfect opportunity for us to not backtrack. And, and what I'm saying with that is anytime we have a group that's on the Christmas parade and, and we give an inch, then we turn around a few weeks or a few months later, and this is historical, this is not my first tour, and take that away. And it, it's a sin and a shame that, that we've done that to the pride parades and to other organizations that have come before, but this goes beyond even that because this is everybody. You know, Alderman Vaughn's right, we're all the same people, it doesn't really matter what we look like on the outside, but the problem is that people still see what we look like on the outside. And if we can't... And if we can't stand up for each other the right way as a community, I believe there's going to be some kind of a march here this weekend, and I would love to see it be one that, as everyone has, as Pastor Stone, I call Coach Stone, because he killed. But as Pastor Stone brought out, it needs to be our narrative, and Starkville is a phenomenal city, where it's some kind of above the other cities in the state. And this is our opportunity, it's the board's opportunity, the city's opportunity, to come together and be one solid unit of Starkvillians. And not even as citizens, but as people. The people who are in this town, the people who are around this town, the people who come into this town, let's be great for more than just our main street, for more than just our football, for more than just a seven million dollar a year football coach, for more than this. Let's be great, because we are people who put people first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, anyone else?
Mayor.
Alderman Little, is that you?
Yes, I would just like to say, to be clear, I don't think anyone is saying they're not going to be supportive and not willing to expedite the process. I think we've all made that crystal clear from the get-go. Nothing was on the agenda tonight. If we can get this process started at first thing in the morning, I think we're all going to bend over backwards, meet, do whatever we need to do to get this approved and facilitated. No one's going, no one's, and if it doesn't, no one is telling anyone they can't march, but for safety and liability issues, it's paramount on the city to have all our bases covered for our insurance carrier, should something happen in the form of an accident, if the route's not planned properly, you know, someone is assuming that risk on their own, but you know, I think we need to follow that process the best we can, and we're willing to go, you know, have a special call meeting and get this done, but no one has brought anything to us to help facilitate that.
Thank you, Alderman Little. And I was going to emphasize that, everything I've heard tonight from every board member was that we will work through an expedited process. So I'm not quite sure what's not being heard about that, but we're going to work through an expedited process. Pastor Stone has said he'll be up here in the morning at eleven o'clock, and I will sit down and visit with him, and we will get the department heads available as we can to make sure that they are seeing what it is they need to see in order to make this as safe, a rally, as safe a march as possibly can be had. So, and insurance, if insurance is unobtainable, then that will be a board decision when the board takes a look at it, to see if that's one of the risks that we will take. So that's going to be, that's going to be essentially the way that works out. But, you know, no one is saying, don't do this. We're just wanting to be as fair as we can, because fairness is after all what we're all talking about in the first place. So every other entity who has come before us, we have required that they go through this same process, and equal treatment means equal treatment, as the Vice Mayor said. So we will work through that, I will work for the next couple of days to make sure that we can do everything possible to make this a reality. So that is the position, I think the board has supported that position, and so I want to make sure that's heard, because it seems as though crap, that was not heard. So, all right, citizens' comments, anyone else?
City Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alvin D. Jimmy, Board, thank you all for your words.
And your name, your name, sir?
I live in Southland, Carver.
Will.
Fame.
Fame, okay.
Thank you all for what you said. I fully believe that you guys mean it, but words aren't actions. They're not. And I believe you when you say that you'll work with Pastor Stone, and thank you Pastor Stone. But just as a reminder, words are not actions. So please, meet words with actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to close it for citizens' comments, and we will move into public hearings. We have five public hearings this evening, and if those of you who wish to exit because you're not interested in anything else we're doing tonight, now would be a good time, and we'll give you just a second before we start going into the public hearing phase. And thank you all for coming out, we appreciate your interest and your involvement. All right, first item under public hearing is the second and final public hearing in consideration of the amending section fourteen point seven point five A of the Unified Development Code to extend the grace period for non-conforming signs for one year until May the fifth, twenty twenty-two. We took this up at the last, the, or being the last, I believe it was, as the first public hearing, and the goal is an acknowledgement of the difficulties that some of our businesses are feeling because of the virus and because of the loss of sales and having to close for a period of time, that this would create a hardship for them to go from the existing sign, the thing they have, to meeting a monument sign, which is what is part of the code. This is, we have had a ten-year grace period, and this is an extension of that one-year grace period with an understanding based on the fact that we are having some financial issues, or most businesses are having financial issues. So, having said that, before I go into the public hearing, do I have any board member who, if we could close the door there in the back, please? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have any board members who want to make any comments prior to the opening of the public hearing? Alderman Carver?
Nothing. Nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No.
All right, I will open it as a public hearing, if you would, if you are interested in speaking to the board regarding this item, this is your opportunity, either for or against. If you would, come state your name and let us know your concerns about this particular item. Okay, seeing no one, then I will close it as a public hearing, and we are now at a point where if I, I'll have a motion for approval from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. No further discussion from the board? Hearing none, if you would, answer yea or nay, the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
I'm sorry, Alderman Walker, was that a yea?
Yea.
Yea?
Yea, okay.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, by vote of five to two, motion carries that will amend the UDC to extend that grace period to one year on May fifth, twenty twenty-two, and for those who may be listening in, we will be sending out letters next year that will give another year notice that this is something that's coming up, so to prepare those people who will be affected by it. Second public, I'm sorry, the next public hearing is a public hearing consideration of amending section thirteen point three point six B, which is a use charge of Unified Development Code to allow agriculture and forestry operations at property zone for industrial uses. And Mr. Latimer, I'm going to let you take this one, since you have been working with your counterpart on this with the school district.
Sure, I have to do, Mayor. So the UDC, if it currently is in effect, does not allow agricultural uses in industrial zone properties, and that came to the fore when the Starkville School District, Carvelock Tivol and Holiday School District, wanted to contract out to cut timber on the track that is to the west of the old Emerson School. And we looked at it, and we said, you know, it makes sense for agricultural and forestry operations to be allowed in industrial zone territories. And so, this is a change of the city's use chart simply to allow that, and the only difference between this and any other zoning change that we have is that Starkville School District wants to make this effective immediately so their timber cutter can get to work in a next edition fashion. And so, the way we have the ordinance drafted is that it would be by unanimous vote for that particular purpose of getting this timber cut. That's my little pleasure.
And if it is not unanimous, it would be the thirty day requirement if it moves forward. So, all right, let me, let's start, getting questions from the board before I open it as a public hearing. Alderman Carver?
Well, I guess I'm going to open it for the board as we announce, but I'd like to take it taken. I guess they might like to take it take by take basis, and track. The address is just for the track, because it comes up in the future, the UDC at that time.
Not the way it's procedurally processed right now for your vote, but you could do it on a track by track basis, but this would be a global change for all industrial zone properties.
Yeah, this is the use chart.
Has anybody helped the African or timber person, like, did they have timber saved or still want to save the process?
Alderman Beatty, I'm going to ask you that question, because apparently you are acquainted with the gentleman. I have not, but Alderman Beatty, are you spoken to the gentleman?
Well, I spoke to him two weeks ago when we first had the conversation about this, and he felt like if we could, if prices follow through per this meeting, and to, for they could go ahead and start this, clean timber shortly after, all get approval to do that, that they were, that he was okay. I think if it's another thirty days out or something like that, and timber is a commodity, so now they probably booked it, and it could affect the contract with the school system. I think that the timber pickers were concerned about that, and I'm sure the school system is also.
Can I answer your question, Alderman Carver?
I think so. Does the move of timber come out on the dead end road, or come out on the highway?
That is some of the things we were negotiating with the timber, and I don't know that we got to the end result of that. I'm sorry, Mr. Latimer, did you, have you been brought back to back into that? And Mr. Kemp is somewhere else, and he was working on that, because part of the problem with that is that they were trying to come out on the airport road extended, which is not designed for that, and they were working through whether or not they could come out on the highway, which is designed to carry that kind of load. So I don't have that answer yet.
Yeah, this is my big challenge, I think, for that, regardless of issues. I can't take care of the extended, and I think so many may have good, I think, uh...
Yeah.
All right, well, and this is obviously only for the purpose of amending the code, after that, how we work out the details.
I think that people wouldn't work on that.
Alderman Sistrum?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
I would just say, Mayor, that I believe that this isn't, doesn't hap, the way the code is written right now, I believe this change to allow agricultural uses in any industrial zone would be an acceptable use throughout the code, and I would be fully supportive of making this, making this change in the UDC.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty, anything further? Okay. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn? All right, thank you. At this point, I'll open it up as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak to this matter now would be the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak to it? All right, seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing. If there's no further discussion about this, I will take a motion.
There, I'll make the motion.
A motion from Alderman Beatty for approval, I presume. Do I have a second? Second from Alderman Carver. All right, if you would, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum?
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous, thank you so much, in that case, it becomes effective immediately, so thank you all for that. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing consideration of a twenty dash zero four SE twenty dash zero four request for a special exception for a borrow pit fifteen ninety-four Rock Hill Road in a rural neighborhood in Stone, Mississippi, with parcel number one one six dash two three dash zero zero seven point one seven. Dr. Kim, are you up?
Yes, I am. Let me share my presentation first.
Okay.
The site is located northeast quadrant of intersection between Rocky Road and US Highway eighty-two. The site is zoned for our rural neighborhood, which allows barrel pit operation through special exception. This is a site plan. The entire property is about one hundred acre, and the subject location is about three acre, and about forty thousand cubic yard of dirt will be moved out. The access will be provided to the east, Rocky Road. This is the erosion control plan, the erosion measures will be provided to the east, because western side will be higher, and access will be provided to the higher side, so that they can actually dig in and go that, move down. The request was noticed in accordance with the section three point four point three point E of the Unified Development Code. As of this date, the planning office has received no response regarding the notifications. And there are criteria for special exception review and approval, and the site suitability. One hundred acre property located near to the northern boundaries of the city and to Highway eighty-two provides a great site suitability for the business. Access is provided on Rocky Road, and no environmental constraints to the business were observed. The proposed barrel pit location is approximately four hundred thirty feet away from the closest residential property. Type D buffer for the industrial use requires only forty foot buffer, so the proposed plan provides a natural buffer that is enough to protect the surrounding area. Life of the barrel pit is expected to be no more than three years, but it will depend on the demand. The operator or applicant doesn't have, doesn't have any knowledge about the demand for now. Due to the unknown demand, traffic impacts cannot be measured, therefore, there should be minimum protection measures for the community, protection from potential noise, so operation hours shall be from seven AM to five PM, and protection from potential dust and other negative impacts. Standard dust control measures with water and entering highway signage shall be provided and used. Safety measures, the applicant shall ensure to utilize all safety measures and be responsible for any incidents and or accidents that occur in the site. It is a barrel pit, so it may not need the city utilities, but the Starkville utilities and Starkville Police Fire Services will be available at all times. The site plan shall be reviewed by the DRC and has been reviewed by the DRC today. The proposed barrel pit operation will not cause to a decline in property values of surrounding properties due to the nature of the surrounding area being a low density rural neighborhood. The proposed special exception is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Emerging concepts for strategic economic development in the comprehensive plan includes construction as one of the conceptual economic development targets. Maintain all local, state, and federal permits. This is examples of the DRC review provided by Engineering Department and Utilities. In the planning department, the proposed use associated with the special exception request does meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. At the May twelfth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission unanimously recommended approval of the request with the three step, three step recommended conditions. So just motion today is move approval of SE twenty dash oh four, a request for special exception to allow for a barrel pit at fifteen ninety-four Rocky Road in our end zoning district with the property number one one six dash two three dash zero zero seven point one seven, with the following three conditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kim. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, if you would. Are you, are you Mr. Parish, or Mr., sorry, Mr. Parish? All right, do you have anything that you would like to add to any of this request?
No ma'am. I think it's, it's a benefit to Starkville, it's a greater community, because it allows us to take this material and use it on greater residential commercial projects throughout the rest of the community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parish. Just want to make sure, gave you that opportunity, I appreciate it. All right. All right, any questions from the board before I open it as a public hearing? Alderman Carver? Alderman Sistrum?
None.
Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn?
One thing, Mr. Parish, which way the traffic will be coming? If the traffic will come, or we will come back to town, and we're going to turn and go another level.
Is the traffic will come over, come back to town or he's gonna turn and go another direction?
Uh, typically, this sort of, it, with our work inside the city, that has been on a case by case basis, depending on the, uh, the desired traffic flow, um, with the, with the, per project, so on a case by case basis, essentially. But everything will come out of that area and come south, uh, down Rock Hill, younger and go whichever way needs to go. But typically, on a case by case basis, based on the site permit per project, so.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right, if there's nothing else, I will open it as a public hearing. Now's the opportunity for anyone to come speak to that.
Speak.
Come ahead.
I'm Dudley Walker, by Alderman Property, and, uh, just wanted to make one comment. In ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six, Alderman Farms was honored by the National Resources, uh, Soil Conservation. We won, uh, we, we were honored by being the state winner of, uh, soil conservation. So I, I, I believe in protecting the earth, protecting the water, and, uh, this will follow through on this program. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of or against this request? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And if there is no further discussion, if you would answer yea or nay, the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
All right, it is unanimous. The vote is seven no, motion carries and the barrel pit can run. Thank you. Uh, next item is a public hearing consideration of S E twenty dash zero five, which is a request for special exception to allow for manufactured home on the east side of Babylon Road, approximately fifteen hundred fifty feet, uh, south of, west of Garrett Road in a rural neighborhood zoning district with parcel, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and the request is by Tommy James Perkins Jr. on behalf of Darlene H. Perkins. So, um, Dr. Kim, do you have, you want to show that very, well, all right, hang on just a second. We have a motion, motion for approval, so I think you may not have to go through all that, Dr. Kim.
Yeah.
Hang on. It's okay, Dr. Kim. I have a motion from, uh, Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
I will have a public hearing here in just a second. Before we vote, I'll have a public hearing. Um, uh, Vice Mayor Perkins, is that you for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, we will hold off any further before we vote. I still need to have a public hearing, so now is the, the point in time at which if anyone wishes to speak to this particular matter, now would be the time to do so. Is the applicant here? There you are. Okay. Uh, and Mr. Perkins, right? Okay, do you have anything you wish to add, Mr. Perkins? All right, thank you so much. All right, I have a motion and a second. I am gonna go through the, through the, uh, each one to see if there's anybody has any, with, anything they wish to say about it. Uh, Alderman Carter? Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am.
No.
Okay, Alderman Little, I'll take that as a note from you and from, from Alderman Sistrunk. Uh, Alderman Beatty, um, Alderman Walker, I'm sorry.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Uh, if you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name. City clerk? You zoned out, Alderman?
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
And Beatty.
Good.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
All right, thank you. That is unanimous as well. Seven no vote. Thank you so much. And last but not least, in the public hearing category, we have a public hearing consideration of a variance twenty dash zero three, which is a request for a variance from sidewalk requirement for the proposed lot two, it was preliminary slated Jack's Corner subdivision. We have seen this before. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, we won't have Dr. Kim make the presentation unless we do.
Move approval, Mayor.
I have a motion from, I believe that was Alderman Little, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, do I have, do you have a second?
Sorry.
Second from Alderman Vaughn? All right, uh, I, I will now open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now would be the time. And this is, uh, this is a matter of Jack's Corner subdivision located at one oh three Highway West, twelve West in the C zoning district. So anyone wishing to speak to this? Anyone? All right. All right, seeing none, um, I will close it as a public hearing and we will take a vote. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Hey, may I ask you one question?
Sure.
Uh, to maybe someone to count, uh, to counsel, is there any circumstance with the current owner or future owner where this, where these sidewalks would not be, as you said, that, that current owner gets permitted to prove, you know, and they have to buy a plant and also not kick in the sidewalk thing, right?
Correct.
And if you, if your owner would also, uh, that kicking with the future owner, so.
Right, correct.
So we're gonna, one way or this is.
We're gonna get a sidewalk. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. All right, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Yay.
Alderman Walker. Alderman Walker.
Yay.
There you go.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
All right, yay.
All right, it is unanimous and, uh, that takes us down to, uh, the planning, which is a special event. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Carter. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Uh, any discussion, Alderman Carter?
No.
Alderman Sistrunk?
None.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn, ma'am.
All right, thank you. If you would answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by vote of five to two, motion carries. Thank you. And I believe, last but not least, is the plain socket, uh, the motion from Alderman Carter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. I heard him first. Sorry, Alderman Little. Um, and I'm assuming no discussion. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Yay.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Nay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by vote of five to two, that motion carries. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
I'm sorry, closed session.
Don't move, Mayor.
Thank you. I heard that Alderman Little do I have a second? Uh, the second from Alderman Vaughn, it is to determine the need for an executive session. So if you would, please clear the room and we will go into close to terminate the session.
All right, the board took no action in executive session, okay? And so I'm going to read the language for the little session and then we will, I will entertain a motion to recess. In accordance with the notice required in the Mississippi Code on Page 254113, the board will be having a work session on the 12th of June 2020 at 10:00 a.m. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second floor conference room located at 110 West Main Street. Public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided to the work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. The notice should be made as part of the minutes to the board meeting and there will be an open public meeting and the city's staff or public and press are invited to attend. And I have, do I have a motion to recess until June 16th? From Aldman Vaughn, I have a motion to recess. Do you have a second?
Sir.
Second from Aldman Beatty. If you would answer yea or nay.
Aldman, speak, sir.
Yea.
Aldman, will.
Have you already recessed, Mr. David? Okay.
Aldman Walker.
Yea.
Aldman Beatty.
Yea.
I declare adjourned.
Yea.
Yea.
All right, by motion five to no, we are in recess. Thank you all so very much.